Okay, that's great. Okay, so welcome to the Committee of the Whole meeting of January 13th, kind of a historic event for Machozen. And we do have regrets from Councillor Gray, who unfortunately is under the weather. So he's out there watching. Hope you feel better soon. And we do acknowledge that we're residing in the territory, traditional territory of the Shano and Stok First Nations. So we have an agenda. What we're going to do is to have public participation following the agenda, but we'll also have the opportunity for public input after Councillor Shukin gives his report on the priorities for 2025. And with that, could we have approval for the agenda? The addition of the pinks. Moved by Councillor Donaldson, seconded by Mayor Little. All in favor? And so this is, you know, a really new beginning for us. The whole idea is to kind of streamline the process, particularly take some of the pressure off staff as far as doing multiple agendas for the different committees and so on. It won't change that much, except that you won't be having individual meetings with individual chairs. But there will still be the liaisons for the various, like the environment, although we won't be doing that tonight. But the environment and the parks and trails and public works and so on will all be in this agenda. And each councillor will, you know, speak on their particular topic. So with that, we will move on to public participation. So please give your name and address and keep an eye out on the little lights on the table down there, because it'll be green while you have your four minutes. And if it turns yellow, then you're just about up. So do we have anyone for public participation tonight?
Sasha Kubicek, 565 Wooton Road. I'd like to comment on Agenda Item 6A. For those of you that don't know, Machozen has many properties that fall under the Agriculture Land Reserve. And these are earmarked lands by the province that are agriculturally valuable properties for food production. These properties have provincial rules that protect these lands and are governed by a governing body of the province called the Agriculture Land Commission. So we have ALR lands and an ALC governing body. What gets confusing is these lands are within the District of Machozen, so we also have district bylaws. And then the provincial rules as well. At a workshop last fall where three councillors attended, we learned a whole bunch of things about the ARLR and the ALC. And what we were learning from other districts was that many districts are amalgamating their bylaws with the ALC regulations to have a unified, simplified message to landowners. You can see where things get complicated if the district approves something for a property, but then there's a different regulation according to the province. This makes it much easier for bylaw enforcement and just a clearer transparency for landowners. The Agenda Item deals with the highest risk for agriculture land right now, which is compromising the soil and bringing on soil deposits and removing soil. What I'm hoping that with the recent egg land approval and the district's commitment to agriculture, that there's going to be a higher duty of care for agriculture land reserve properties and an appetite to amalgamate and have ALC rules that mirror the bylaws so that property owners are understanding the same message for their property use. An example right now is for a soil deposit permit, there's no way that, there's nowhere that it flags it that this is an ALR property being applied for or a regular property. And same thing for a building permit. There's nothing that differentiates what type of property is. And then there's that discrepancy in the rules. So I'm hoping that this is something that council will be favorable for when they get to that Agenda Item. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, unfortunately, it's not going through outside the building if we don't, I don't think, if we don't use the mics. Is that right? Yeah, so, well, it's just something we're going to have to look into before the next meeting. Anyway, we'll just carry on. Do we have anybody else for public participation?
Just to respond to the notes about the mic and based on my observations from last week, if the speaker, all speakers, make sure that the mic is directed at their mouth and don't stand too close. Are you hearing me all right in the audience? Yeah. Then it makes a big difference to the clarity. The other thing is to make sure that you don't turn your head away when you're speaking. Because when you do that, your voice is lost entirely. So those are two things that I think might help our general ability to hear everyone. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Certainly sorry about that. We really hope we get that corrected as soon as possible. Anyone else for public participation?
Hi, Darren Brown, Graceland. I'm here tonight to address concerns about transparency and fiscal responsibility and community priorities, particularly regarding the Duke Road East Trail and the Parks and Trails Committee. So we've got an Act of Transportation Plan and the Duke Road East Trail Survey. First, I'd like to ask about the Act of Transportation Plan. When will the public see it? Will council review it first? And then public transparency is key here, and the public deserves to understand how decisions like the Duke Road East Trail align with that larger framework. Why are we planning Phase Two and Three, according to minutes, of the Duke Road Trail when Phase One remains divisive, lacks broad community support, stretches our budget beyond its limits? We can't afford Phase One. It's time to prioritize projects that unite us, not divide us. I think it's important to make a point of clarification. Gas tax revenue is not free money. Gas tax revenue is an important tool to address pressing infrastructure and environmental needs. It's a limited fund to maximize long-term community benefits. Every dollar spent on one project is a dollar not available for other more pressing projects. Gas tax funds can be used for a broad range of projects. As council fully explored, the broader opportunities for these funds. Are there bridges that need repair? I can think of at least one contentious one. Could the funds support drinking water infrastructure, like the CRD Water Station? How about improvements to wastewater systems like at our old school? How about brownfield or contaminated sites? Are there any areas that council might be familiar with that might require prioritization there? What evidence supports that the Duke Road East Trail is the most urgent and impactful project from Machozen? Are there not more critical projects that would require broader benefits, that would provide broader benefits to residents? So I also want to bring up the conditions of our existing trails. So right now, many of our current trails in our community are unusable. There's down trees, there's washed-out road-based materials. And yet, we're proposing to spend, I think, $20,000, additionally, $20,000 on the Duke Road East Trail? Let's ask P-Task to fix what is broken first. That would, restoring immediate trails would provide immediate benefits to the broader community without additional environmental disruption and controversy. How can we justify building a new trail when the trails we already have are unsafe and inaccessible? One other point I wanted to raise was now, I understand that new terms of reference are being drafted for the Parks and Trails Committee, and I want to know when these, when will the public see these drafts? Will there be an opportunity for input before they're finalized? Additionally, does the committee need subcommittees? How does this support or hinder transparency? We've seen no minutes or records from these subcommittees, and this lacks accountability and raises concerns. The new terms of reference must include clear mandates for public reporting and assure these processes remain transparent. Any changes to advisory select committees should be conducted through an open process where community input is actively sought and incorporated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just one thing I might ask is that if people have knowledge about parts of our trail network that are unsafe and inaccessible, they really should contact the district office. We have a trails coordinator who, you know, he's in a different circumstance right now, but he has a network of people who will actually go out and make the needed repairs. And P-Task is quite skilled in doing that. So again, if there's knowledge of parts that need some work, please contact us.
Okay, maybe you could mention that again. It's your time for your report. So unless there's anyone else for public participation, we're going to move on to adoption of minutes. So we're going to take these as a group. If there are any corrections to any one of them or more of them, we'll pull that one out, move adoption of the rest, and then go back and get the corrections for whatever ones that are not or need working on. So we will be looking to adopt the Finance Committee meeting of October 7th, the Special Finance Committee meeting, Budget Meeting of October 9th, Special Finance Committee Budget Meeting of October 24th, Special Finance Committee Budget Meeting of November 12th, Community Planning Committee meeting of November 18th, the Environment and Natural Areas Committee of November 18th, the Special Finance Committee Budget Meeting of November 21st, the Special Finance Budget Meeting of December 5th, and the Public Works and Productive Services Committee meeting of December 9th. So could have motion for adoption. Moved by Councillor Shukin, seconded by Councillor Donaldson. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, we'll do the same thing with the receipt of minutes. So we have the Agriculture Advisory Select Committee meeting of December 10th, Parks and Trails Advisory Select Committee meeting December 17th, Environmental Advisory Select Committee meeting of November 26th, Healthy Communities Advisory Select Committee November 26th, and the Fire Hall Steering Committee meeting of December 4th. Motion for receipt.
Just one question, also the minutes from the Environment Advisory Committee from December 8.
Oh, great, thank you. Missed that one and that one. So a motion to receive these minutes. Moved by Councillor Shukin, seconded by Councillor Donaldson. Discussion?
Thank you, councillor. You know, I just wanted to make one mention of the Parks and Trails Advisory Meeting. I believe, sorry, I don't have them open in front of me. But I just wanted to acknowledge the work that had been done on the La Toria, sorry, the La Toria Community Bridge, which is the bridge that connects Duke Road East to the Far Hill Road. And this was a bridge that was built, it's referred to as the La Toria Creek, sorry, La Toria Community Bridge, because it was built with volunteers a number of years ago. Well, I just want to take my hat off to a number of volunteers and our public work staff who came over in December and did a bunch of work on that bridge to repair the timbers that, on the tread of the bridge. And notably, Mr. Ron Aubrey and Mr. Ken Williams as well were pivotal in getting that work done, as well as our own public work experience. So I just wanted to acknowledge.
Okay, that's great. Maybe if we have any other things like that, you could bring them up in your councillor's update?
Okay. Okay.
Sorry, but.
I don't have a councillor's update specifically.
Well, there you go. Thank you, that's, we do appreciate all that work and that's a lot. I haven't been to that bridge. I'd like to go and see it. So thank you. All right, moving on to Business Advising, excuse me, which is the. Do we get, I think we did. Do we vote on the minutes? Okay, call the question then on the receipt of the minutes. All in favor? All right, we're moving on. So this is the Agriculture Advisory Select Committee Recommendations from December 10th meeting. So we'll move this over to Councillor Donaldson.
Thank you. So when the Agriculture Advisory Select Committee met December 10th, there were a number of topics, as outlined in the minutes. And these are the highlights of some recommendations and things we'd like to move on. The first one being the geese update, which has been a topic across the region, actually. The committee recommend council send a resolution to present at the Association of Vancouver Island Coastal Communities Convention to support a goose call and seek support from the Peninsula and Area Agricultural Committee, which is called PAC, municipalities for the resolution. And on the following page, the resolution reads, "Whereas Canada geese are an ongoing destructive element to agriculture on southern Vancouver Island through the disruption of growing fields, the consumption of crops, and the risks posed by avian influenza and E. coli contamination, and thus present risks to food security and the broader environment. And whereas previous management efforts such as egg addling, hazing, and selective harvesting have been demonstrated to be ineffective, leading to an ever-growing population of geese. Therefore, be it resolved that a call of Canada geese be authorized by B.C. Environment and Parks, with coordination and planning of a call taking place with key partners, including landowners, the B.C. Conservation Service, local governments, the regional districts, and others, as may be necessary to undertake effective action." Motion to approve that resolution for AVICC.
Okay. Moved by Councillor Donaldson, seconded by Mayor Little. Discussion?
Sorry, I just know my support for this. There's bound to be some complexities around this. I'm not totally privy to all of this, but because Canada geese are migratory birds, there may even be a federal arm in all of this. But I think it's worth making the pitch at AVICC and make this traction and get the discussion going.
Mayor Little?
Yeah, I'd support this motion as well. And I'm just wondering, through the chair, to Councillor Donaldson, did we send a note to the CRD regarding the recent or more recent effects on agriculture fields in Machozen from the geese? Did we send? Because that's something that we might want to do is advocate directly to the CRD since they do have a CRD goose management program.
That would be a good idea. All I recall is that we had, you and I had met with the Chair of Agriculture Committee, and that was part of that discussion. I'm not sure if we did send him letters.
Well, I know for me, I know it's a problem, but I'm not quite ready to support this without a bit more information, like from the CRD and some agricultural experts that have, you know, I'm sure this is, no, this is a problem, not just here, but in other areas. And I'd really like to know how successful calls have been in other places. And just a little bit more information before I would support this.
Okay, so I can comment that in Parksville, they have done a call, which I understand has been successful to a degree. To what degree, that part, I'm still missing that information. However, I had the opportunity to attend the PAC meeting last week. And as they went around the room and introduced themselves, every single farmer had a problem with geese on their properties. One farmer who grows corn, within 20 minutes of planting corn, an acre had been destroyed. That cost him $10,000. Another one who has vegetable crops, he's now in debt $20,000 to $40,000. And there's no insurance for producers when those sorts of things happen. Green is another one. We're seeing a lot of that, of course, here in Machozen. We're much smaller scale, but I do know that our produce crops are being ravaged by geese. And certainly the hay, there's several hayfields now. This last summer especially, it was just dust. It's just gone to black mold. And, you know, it's kind of like when you start seeing, you're in the market for looking for a car, and then you see a car everywhere. Well, all of a sudden, now I'm seeing geese everywhere. And it is a problem. And they're not leaving, they're not ones that migrate south and then come back. So in the background, a report, our esteemed Chair had put this together, and there's more information there as well. So I'm prepared to present this at AVIC if I have the support of this council. And certainly will be connecting with my colleagues across the region as well in that regard for this convention.
Right, thank you. As I said, I would like a little bit more information, maybe some of those examples. I'd like to know what those, some of the efforts that those farmers say that, you know, had big losses from the geese, like what they had done to try to prevent that in advance. So at any rate, we'll call the questions. So all in favor of this motion? And I'm opposed. That passes.
And then the second one. The second one is about the fill removal and placement on ALR land, as was mentioned from the local farmer here, Mr. Kubicek. The motion reads that the committee recommend council direct staff to incorporate Agriculture Land Commission Regulations, ALC Policy L02, for soil removal or placement for properties within the Agriculture Land Reserve into the Machozen Soil Removal and Deposit Bylaw Number 402. We recommend, the committee is recommending that the district make these ALR rules readily available and easy to access for farm owners within the ALR. This is one of our strategic priorities that I believe council Shukin will review a little bit in a few minutes. So this is a motion I'd like to put forward to this committee.
Okay, let's move my councillor Donaldson, seconded by Mayor Little. Discussion? Any more discussion? Well, it's certainly a good idea. I mean, the more regulations we can have to prevent that soil dumping is for the better, for sure.
It will also help not only people on, you know, certainly the farmers on ALR lands or people who are not farming those lands to understand what it is to be successful in keeping the land in reserve and knowing what those rules are. And our staff for having, I actually have provided copies of this to our senior management staff as to what to be able to reference when people do come in and ask about these sorts of things. So if everybody has the same information, it makes it easier for us to manage our properties in accordance to those rules.
Okay, so we'll call the question unless there's any more discussion. All in favor? That passed.
Thank you.
Okay, so from there, we will go to the finance report. And Councillor Donaldson, you're up again.
The councillor's update. Okay, so in the councillor's update, got a comment here, some points regarding the Oneifuka Water Distribution Commission Bulk Water Station. This will be partnership funding. 50% of it will be funded by our, not by the taxpayers of this community, but by a climate grant that our esteemed CFO has sought out and consulted with the province as to the application of the grant. This was brought to light when we learned that a lot of people in our community, probably 25% of our residents, are on wells. And each year, those wells are drying up a little bit earlier. And the fact that, well, in January, February, and March, I hosted three different water talks, giving lots of information from various expertise in their fields, whether it's watering, capturing, how water goes in and out of the ground for recharge, wells, that sort of thing, including the engineer that I work with on the board of the Oneifuka Water Distribution Commission, who gave a very informative presentation explaining the cost of bringing piped water in, which is at this point in time very cost prohibitive to our residents. So this was a more attainable option, was to have a bulk water station. There is one, the closest one probably is Henry Ang Way, which is very congested to get in and out of in the city of Langford. And the next one, closest to us, would be East Sue. So this gives an opportunity both for either the water trucks who are delivering to these residents or the residents themselves who can outfit their own trucks with a tow to be able to do this. So it's closer. If you're looking 20 years out, we don't know if the water's going to be more. I doubt with climate change, that sort of thing. So this, in my notes here, suggesting the sustainability and the GHG emissions, those sorts of things, are all things to be considered. So the, our staff as well as the Oneifuka Water Distribution staff have looked at two options. There's others, I suspect. It needs to be very open and accessible. The ones that I've seen in the other locations are a drive-through, not a back-in. So not in an area where it could get congested. So open, accessible. The Water Commission will build it to their specs. It won't be something that we do. And then it's pay-as-you-go for the users. West Shore Parks and Recreation reported on this last week regarding the new master plan consultant who has been hired, which is Expedition Recreation and Land Art Consulting. And the Oneifuka Arena, we have two arenas, and there's the Q, and then there's the Oneifuka Arena, which is up at the top. We're looking at actually keeping ice in there year-round, just the amount of use, the demand for that ice now. So we're looking at the cost-effectiveness of that. And the agriculture, which we've just talked about, the Goose Call Resolution for AVIC and UBCM. And I just request that the Committee of the Whole support the recommendations, which we just have done. Soil dumping workshop, which was November 13th. And again, request that the Committee of the Whole support the recommendation of the Egg Committee. And I thank you for doing that.
Thank you. Okay, now we'll move on to community planning. As I mentioned before, following Councillor Shukin's presentation on the 2025 priorities, there will be an opportunity for public input. So Councillor Shukin, take it away.
Oh, thank you very much. We're going to start with the Parks and Trails Master Plan. Okay. So thanks very much. So in May of 2023, council passed a resolution to move ahead with the Parks and Trails Master Plan, and that be launched in the fall of 2024. So P-Task has met a number of times, and we now have this essentially as a standing item on our agenda. But what we wanted to do was get a little bit more specific about scope of work and the timelines and public engagement. So what you have before you is a proposal to proceed. And what I oversaid on my part, I didn't provide any sort of recommendation or motion. And what I would like to read one out to, if you see fit to move ahead with this. But what I'm hoping we can maybe do at the end of this is pass a motion that the committee recommend to council, sorry, recommend that council authorize Parks and Trails Advisory Select Committee to proceed with updating the district's Parks and Trails master plans based on the scope of work and timeline presented on January 13th, so today. So let's, I'll just walk you through it very quickly here. So next slide is what is to be updated. So we have two Parks and Trails documents of the 2009 plan, which focuses on trails exclusively. And then the Parks and Recreation Master Plan, which was developed in 1986. So those dates alone sort of beg for an update of these things. Both of these documents, they're wonderful, they have great information. We can retain some of that information and build it into the forthcoming plan. But they, as noted here, they have limitations. So the maps are awful. Again, the 2009 plan only focuses on trails. And the 86 plan, it's 29 years old. And we've moved, even Machozen has moved a long way. And we've moved, even, even Machosen has moved a long way from nineteen eighty-six. So the next slide shows the project scope. And I'll just, I'd better just read this out. So P task will develop a master plan covering the care and management of Machosen's parks and trails. The updated master plan will look ahead to the community's future parks and trails needs and aspirations. Informed by community input, the work will involve, and then I've got a number of bullets here. So developing a community profile relevant to Parks and Trails matters, identifying Machosen's current Parks and Trails assets and developing general management plans for each, identifying opportunities where Parks and Trails network could be expanded, then identifying trends, issues that are either impacting or could impact the network, Parks and Trails network, then improving the mapping that we have, and then clarifying process matters like P tasks, roles and responsibilities, or an advisory committee's roles and responsibility. The Parks and Trails is approached in, in new subdivisions, the need for regular plan reviews, finances, and, and, um, possibly the, uh, use of the Parkland Acquisition Reserve. So that's the general scope that we want to start out with and no doubt it will, you know, change as we go along or adapt itself as we go along. So the public engagement is crucial on this and our goal is to hold at least two open houses. Ideally, the first one would be in May, excuse me, would be in March of twenty twenty-five. Uh, we have talked about maybe doing another session focused on the active transportation process and others, other sort of initiatives. We might piggyback with, with active transportation on that. Do a community-wide mail-out similar again to the active transportation mail-out that was done. Information on the district, district website, article on the muse. And then the P task regular meetings would be a forum for the master plan as well. So, and those are essentially happening every month. I think we met nine or ten times last year, so. So the proposed timelines, um, first public engagement session in March. From March to October, there's research and development of a draft, a draft material for the master plan. And November of twenty twenty-five, we do a second public engagement session with showing the information that we've, um, attained to date and developed to date. And then from November until January twenty twenty-six, so essentially a year from now, we, um, finalize the draft master plan. So. Uh, the next slide shows the information that we have drawn. So the active transportation plan is going to be developed. We have great descriptions of all of the parks and the trails, I think it's all of the trails, on the website. So we can begin to, um, update and use that though. The census information, the growth strategy. And, um, there are some great examples of master plans in, uh, throughout the other districts. The one I was able to have a look at and I, sorry, I've looked at quite a number, but the one I thought was a wonderful example was the Central Sandwich Plan that was done, I think, last year. So budget, um, we would like to have twenty thousand dollars available for the update process. Now, whether we use that all, I doubt it. But ideally, the budget would be used for display material, for mapping, graphic design, and possibly consultant support. But right now, the, um, the plan is for this to be done by P task. So it'd be done on a volunteer basis. So I might talk to Mr. Payet and see how we might be able to structure that. If there's a pot about, like, that we can access as needed. But, uh, yeah. And that's it. You know, the one thing I just want to say though is why the master plan is important. The one thing is, is that we've seen from the master, sorry, the parks, sorry, the active transportation plan process, and even going way back to the village square process, when there was a survey of what, what community members do. Walking is number one. Almost everybody seems to walk and get out. It's like Machosen's national sport or and equestrian stuff as well. But walking is really important to this community. So Parks and Trails Master Plan will cover and update some of the information relevant to that. But green space, of course, is pivotal to Machosen's identity. And the master plan covers so much of that too. So there are eighteen trails and four major parks. If you think about Elanar Man, Machosen Wilderness Park, Black Brush Swamp and Blinkhorn Nature Park, we might also have the buffer land as part of that as well. So these, in terms of the what Machosen likes to do and how we identify with our, with our community, this, this has some of the, uh, the gold, if you will, in terms of, uh, those two things. That's a quick run through. Any thoughts or questions or?
Well, it seems like a really ambitious and, and worthwhile project. And it's something that, and Parks and Trails are really integral to the whole being of Machosen. So I think to, to update that plan and, and get public input on, on it is, is going to be really great. Mister Donaldson.
Thank you. Thank you, councillor Shookin. It is timely to update the master plan because as we've noticed, uh, a lot of the, um, proposals that were in the, in the existing or the previous, uh, master plan, we've accomplished. We've accomplished many, many trails and, uh, I, I applaud P task for being the, uh, a very ambitious group over the decades of, um, sourcing trails when there's been subdivisions, um, out there, clearing them, taking, you know, taking the branches and, and, uh, answering the calls when somebody phones in about a log down or in some cases, uh, not all trails are, uh, for bicycles. You have to step over that log, um, which, uh, often we do if we're hiking, running or, uh, riding our horses, what have you. But wherever there's danger, there, uh, the attention has, has been given. So I appreciate that and the, um, the patience of, of when we have had funds for putting in the appropriate aggregate in muddy spots, that sort of thing. Uh, so it does take time. It does take planning and having a master plan and upgrade one is great. I do have a question. You're asking the twenty thousand dollars for a budget item. Is the mail-out cost considered in that, uh, within that budget? It would be okay.
Because I, that sometimes can be expensive or sometimes just putting on insert into, uh, our muse. Cover the whole community. So, so those are things to, you know, keep the cost down, but cover, uh, a broad spectrum in the community as well. So thank you for your work. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Thanks for the idea. I, um, I, again, I might just, I would request the following motion. I don't know if I should move it, but I'll just read it out. That the committee recommend that council authorize the Parks and Trail Advisory Select Committee proceed with updating the district's Parks and Trails master plan based on the scope of work and timeline presented on January thirteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Okay, moved by councillor, did you get all that? Moved by councillor Shookin, seconded by Mayor Little. Any more discussion? All right, call the question, all in favor? That is passed.
Thanks very much.
Now councillor Shookin has a presentation on council's twenty twenty-five priorities.
Okay. So the, the point of this, uh, next session is to talk about the priorities, what we came up with, but also, and do so in order to get your input. So we met, uh, in late December, we being council and a, and a body of staff to talk about what was ahead for twenty twenty-five. And we came up with eleven, I think it's eleven sort of top line elements in terms of strategy and goals and a number of other actions that support those. So I'll just go through those and I'm going to try and be no more than ten minutes here and then we can open it up to the floor for discussion. So the first one is really simple. Support district staff in maintaining day-to-day operations in Machosen. And I, I think this more than anything is an acknowledgement by council that there is so much work that goes on. Um, council is not the focus of the district in what it is. It's staff getting things done on a day-to-day basis. And so part of this is, again, to set expectations with residents and volunteers about service and responsiveness levels. There is so much to be done out there. So we just want to make sure that we're not, um, yeah, we're, we're giving staff the due time that they can take to, to get things done and also against setting realistic expectations. Next one is develop a responsible operations capital budget for twenty twenty-five. This is, goes without saying. One of the features, um, and I would just like to open up to the table if there's any comments from, from the rest of, uh, the committee members. Um, one of the features that we'll see of the forthcoming budget is that there are going to be a number of non-discretionary items that we have to contend with. So that's everything from, um, projected collective agreement settlements, policing administrative costs, and to, uh, the potential of a nine-one-one download as well. That's something that the mayors in, um, the, the communities that are impacted by this are continuing to fight. But the last we heard is that government is very determined to push those nine-one-one costs on, on local communities. And that in itself would be a close to a three percent increase, as I understand. One of the things that we'll try and do this year is assess the BC Community Building Fund, which we have two point four million dollars. Um, there's been some discussion about the best use. We have looked to the potential of a new fire hall. That is a decent sum of money that might go there. But there's been also discussion about could we carve out, um, a small portion of the fund to do more specific, uh, and smaller scale projects? So that'll come up later in this year in terms of fuller discussion and involving the community as well. Okay. So two things here that are significant, the school and the fire hall. So we've, it, what's interesting, and I think everyone in the room knows, the fire, sorry, the school has gone through three councils now, each of whom have added something, a new, a new sort of element to the evolution. So it was bought in twenty seventeen. The council after that, uh, got the grant for the gym and also found paying clients that, that were, were and are leasing. And we are now in a position to probably like fulfill the original ambition of the, um, of the school when it was purchased in twenty seventeen, given that the gym is finished and the classrooms are now open for business. So, um, but there continue to be some lingering questions about financing and the use of the school. And that's something we're going to try and address in twenty twenty-five. There has, as I, again, everyone knows, a fire hall, um, steering committee that was struck and we're underway with feasibility study. We should be getting that back some point mid. So we'll have a, mid twenty twenty-five, thank you. We'll have a chance to assess the findings of that and see what direction we head in. As I understand, the steering committee met recently and they've, um, appointed a smaller group to advise the company that has taken on a feasibility study, which seems like a fantastic outfit. Lots of experience in terms of building firewalls. Provincial housing requirements, we are essentially by legislation bound to address those. The big things will be, um, updating our OCP and land use bylaw by the end of this year to meet the projections that were, um, basically uncovered, if you will, through the interim housing needs assessment that was done, or sorry, late last year. That showed, um, uh, a need for eight hundred and fifty-two homes in a, over a twenty-year period. What in the discussion, if you were here that night, our planner believes that we can meet much of that within the confines of the current OCP and the land use bylaw, much, not all. And she's setting to work on that and we should have the results of her assessment, um, again, in the, in the coming weeks. Uh, the one thing I will point out is that we have to do another assessment in twenty twenty-eight. And this future assessment in twenty twenty-eight will actually be more fulsome in terms of bringing in community values. The one that we just went through was absolutely data-driven. Didn't matter if you were in Victoria or Peace River or, um, um, up north or Machosen. You had to follow the same data requirements. Uh, and it, it actually made, I, I would suggest for a bit of a dumb model, but it's one that everyone has to follow. We have and we're going to move ahead with it, but also look ahead to twenty eight, twenty twenty-eight as well. So. Update policies and bylaws, um, around environmental protection, peaceful livable community, housing requirements and good governance. And we've been doing this, um, since very early in the term. You can see the bylaws there that we're going to continue working on. Soil removal, soil removal and deposit bylaw, again, being one of them that was mentioned earlier today, so. Public safety matters. This is a big pot catching a number of things. Road management plan, active transportation, safety issues posed by the trees on Lombard Drive, um, climate change matters and, and also the district's accessibility plan. I'll mention that the accessibility plan was approved last week and staff are going to be helping us with a number of things related to that. We'll be looking at improving access to information on the website. We've talked about improving, um, the, the acoustics in the chamber and ideally providing support for people with hearing aids as well. And so two other things. Parking, parking at both the community house and the school, the old school. Okay, the school museum is also going to be addressed as well. So, um, again, this was a provincial requirement. We got, um, that done very quickly. So thanks to staff and especially Ms. Hanson for, uh, for getting this moving, so. Okay. Uh, working to protect our environment, supporting initiatives focusing on land conservation, biodiversity enhancement and water and watershed protect, protection. Um, one of, to me, one of the marquee items here is, um, address the buffer land. There was a, a conservation oriented zone that was proposed, I think it was in October. The planner has this as well and she's going to be coming back to us with more information about that as soon as she can. There's another, there's other action areas here as well, riparian areas, um, engaging the owners of taxes and properties on land protection and also some broader work. Smart, smart move, I think, to look at some of the work that had been done previously. The blue-green strategy, sustainability strategy and the outlands report. So that's, uh, likely going to be done through the environment committee. Okay, we're almost done. Again, uh, support opportunities enhance agricultural, recreation and cultural activities, active transportation plan and the agricultural plan being pivotal. And also we've talked about the Parks and Trails master plan, so. There we go. I think, yeah, this is the last slide. So continue community engagement and there've been a number of initiatives that were done last year. Anything from the mayor's tea to the, um, session we did on Duke Road East on July thirty-first, to the public hearings that we've had with council. Uh, and again, the advisory committees all have a public engagement element and folks are welcome to come and speak to that. Last one is continuing the evolving and updating, sorry, continue evolving and updating council governance processes. And you're witnessing one of the evolutions here tonight with the committee meeting. So, uh, Yanis, councillor Up mentioned, very, very historic night. Just blown away by the gravitas. Sorry. And, uh, there we have it. There's a lot there and to be quite honest, I, I think maybe there's too much there. But it sets us up, I think, for an ambitious year and a test to see if we can actually get some of this stuff done, so. Okay.
Okay.
So councillor Up, did we want to open the floor for folks to?
Yes.
Comment?
Yes, so please, uh.
Good evening, Brent Donaldson, Charles T. Court. Just a question regarding the housing initiative for the eight hundred odd dwellings. Is there a baseline now? And the reason I ask that is that there are folks, um, that have maybe secondary suites that maybe aren't registered through land title or not land title or the assessment authority. So we could have a, a good number of that eight hundred or odd already in place now. So we could be ahead of the game. So, um, what is, uh, the method that they came up with that eight hundred? Are they looking at the housing we have now off what a global map or?
So thank you for the interesting and very complicated question. The, the methodology that they used is, it is, is really complicated. It's based on, huh, it's based on population, of course. And it's based on a number of criteria that the, in terms of growth targets that the, um, the province set out. Mr. Donaldson, you, you like, you'd have to go back and have a look. There's a, there's a big, long explanation of the. There's a, there's a big, long explanation of the the methodology used. And again, it applies to everybody in the province. And I apologize, I I can't spell it out. What what you raise those about the potential of capturing more housing that that exists currently and seeing if that can go toward meeting our targets is an intriguing one. My sense is that that is going to also be very complicated because you have to, that so much depends on the owners coming forward and declaring that they have rental units. There's also the problem, too, if some of those units haven't been built to building code standards. That is, that is going to pose challenges. So as much as I'd like to think that some of those sort of below-the-table homes might help us, I I'm kind of doubtful that it's going to be the case. But but thanks, I'm going to bring this back to the planner and ask, so, thank you.
Jim McPherson, Eagle Tree Place, I just have two questions. One is whether or not the person has been named for the district representative on the accessibility plan. And the other question I have is, what's the alcohol consumption policy?
So I can tackle the alcohol consumption policy?
As as far as the accessibility committee, we were just waiting for all of the the member, member, members from the different municipalities to name their representatives and then they'll, they'll all be announced at the same time. I think it's probably going to be happening pretty, maybe Mayor Little knows more about that than I do. It should be shortly.
So in terms of the policy, as I recall, this came up in early twenty twenty-three when we were reviewing one of the the agreements with one of the the organizations that we we have a license of occupation with. And there was reference to alcohol consumption in that, but there was no backup policy. And so the consideration of the day was that we we do and be explicit about what the policy is with the district. So that that's essentially where it came from, so.
Yeah, I think it was a lot to do with like district property and various events and things like that. So, yeah, liabilities. Do we have any more input from Gallery? Nope.
Thank you.
Hey, I think you have a recommendation?
Mine, too. Well, what I would suggest is that I would move that the twenty twenty-five council priorities be moved to council for consideration of adoption, so.
Right, moved by Councilor Shukin, seconded by Councilor Donaldson. Any discussion? All in favor? That passes? Right, that concludes the community planning section. We won't be going into the environment, the natural areas section because, obviously, because Councilor Gray is not able to make it tonight. So in that case, I'll move on to public works and protective services. And I have a verbal update, which got a little longer than I expected, but anyway. I did want to mention the Michozen Seniors Association is continuing to offer a variety of free informative programs at the Resource Center. They began the new year with the ICBC Driving Safety Presentation on the impacts aging have on driving, has on driving. Coming up on the sixteenth is the monthly meeting of the Michozen Caregiver Support Group. January twenty-second, there's a Service Canada CRA presentation on government benefits and programs. January twenty-ninth features Ears to You mobile hearing testing. January thirtieth is a sleep workshop for those who have trouble sleeping. January thirty-first is the monthly Friday social drop-in hosted by the highs of Michozen at the community house. So people are interested in attending any of those programs. They've, from what I understand, they're, they've all been really good, but to contact the Resource Center. To, some of them are required for registration, some of them are drop-in. As far as the public works crew, mostly they're on standby for winter weather conditions. I noticed the lights were all on there tonight when we got here. So possibly with the weather temperature dropping, I'm sure there'll be sanding and salting going on. They've been working on signs and doing maintenance on various signs, culverts, bridges, and grounds, along with, from what I understand, filling potholes at the community house. As far as the school, with three of the of the old school, six classrooms having long-term leases, including Miles Zero Brewery, Michozen Preschool, and the Michozen Wellness Collective now, which is set to open this spring. The facility is becoming quite a happening place. Other three classrooms have had a long list of renters, both for one-time and regular weekly use. A new renter is West Shore Parks and Recreation, which is offering pilot programs in first aid and exercise classes. Last week, more than sixty participants took advantage of three free triat classes in eccentrics and in functional fitness. They're both non-impact classes designed to improve strength and mobility. The eccentrics class offered offered to produce you a long and lean body. So I signed up. I've been waiting seventy-five years for a long and lean body. Anyway, these programs are a win-win situation for all involved. And one example of one that's often happening on the weekends or one like that that's happening on the weekends is the emergency management course. People attending this course have come from the Victoria Airport, the Gulf Islands, the Lower Mainland, the Mid-Island, and Michozen. And the only other class, this emergency class of this type, is run by the Justice Institute in Vancouver. It costs nearly two hundred dollars more for participants than the one in Michozen and requires attendees to pay for ferries, hotels, and meals on top of the class fee. Besides certification, the courses foster communication among departments, camaraderie, and coordination during emergencies, which benefits all of us. And there are a lot of programs like that going on in the school. And these, you know, sort of just generally call them training courses, but there there are a lot of very valuable and informative courses. And this course and all the others offered to members of emergency services outside Michozen is charged the commercial rate of two hundred and fifty dollars a day for the use of each classroom. And also, one thing I did want to mention is that a lot has come up about the finance of the school. Well, our CFO, Mr. Creek, is working on a financial report about the school, which I think they'll all be looking forward to, and and he's planning on bringing that forward next month. So that concludes public works portion. Now, we, you know, we'd have some correspondence from the Michozen Arts and Cultural Center Association and and Pink's on the similar topic from Avril Yocam and Barb Swatzky. So I was wondering, I need to put him on the spot, but would our C A O, Mr. Payet, be able to give us a little bit of update? I know that you met with the MACA folks recently. About is there anything you can you can tell us about maybe what's coming up in the future with that?
Through the chair. How is that sounding, everyone? Good? So I had a chance to meet with MACA president, vice president, and members of their board. Last week, we had a conversation about their lease, their agreement, and reiterated that the overall building is running in the red and that would be interested in working with MACA and partnering with them to find ways that they could help us with our revenue expense deficit. And we also talked about subleases and the use of space and how we could work together in the future. Thank you.
Right, thank you. We'll receive, we'll see the correspondence for information. I did have a, passed along a note from the mayor to say to remember, there is tea with the mayor and the acting mayor this Thursday, starting at two P M. in the chambers here. Hope to see you then. And we don't have any other business, so we'll call motion to adjourn. Moved by Councilor Shukin, seconded by Mayor Little. All in favor? Thank you.